Hello and welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining today's townwide, nonpartisan Meet the Park Ridge Board of Education candidates, in person in this room and from home via Park Ridge TV. We are pleased to host two of the three candidates running for two open positions on our school board, Mr. David Bradler and Mr. David Shelton-Hollers Jr. Unfortunately, the candidate, Mr. Christopher A. Ametrono, declined to respond to our multiple invitations to participate, including outreach in by email, certified mail, email follow-up, and social media direct messages. While we are disappointed to not have all three candidates appear this evening in a process of civic and community engagement, we are thrilled to continue forward as neighbors informing neighbors with a thoughtful dialogue that we hope will prove to be informative for you this evening and help you make an even more informed decision in this year's election. As the word "education" is in the name of the seats for this election, we also hope this event provides an educational opportunity for us to all learn more about what our Board of Education does and what we can do as citizens to actively engage with this nonpartisan entity that makes decisions that impact the educational experience in our town. Before we begin the moderated Q&amp;A portion of the evening, we wanted to provide an update as to how and why we organize this community event. The residents who met at sign-in, who you see here at this table, we believe it's important in our civic engagement process for voters to have an opportunity to get to know candidates running for local office in a nonpartisan, engaging, and easy way, connecting people with people. We are simply a small group of your neighbors putting this on for our neighbors because we care, we're pragmatic, and we believe a good school district doesn't magically appear by happenstance. It develops with intention and attention. So on care, we care about our community, our schools, and decisions that impact our children. On pragmatism, every decision or trade-off of what or what not to fund in our students' educational experiences ultimately impacts our wallets. And on being intentional and paying attention, there are intentional decisions that are made, trade-offs and investments, including to infrastructure and building grounds, people, our teachers, power professionals, administration, and programs, including curriculum, extras, extracurriculars, and overall opportunities for students to be inspired in their day-to-day education. So why is getting together important? Because we know that people have diverse perspectives, diverse needs, diverse ways of approaching decisions, and often it's through dialogue and learning that we begin to understand each other's perspectives. That's why this forum is important. So no matter what your personal beliefs are, we can be more informed on how our school board candidates will approach making decisions, and through our questions this evening, provide some information back to the candidates as to what's top of mind for our town. In organizing this event, we did our homework. We engaged in conversations with the League of Women Voters members who advised us on how to run this event in a fair and nonpartisan way. Their bylaws would have allowed them to moderate if Mr. Ametrono had responded, but absent that, we followed their advice to proceed on a more informal basis. We also leaned on the wisdom of the Westridge PTO Committee, who organized a similar event for its membership a few weeks ago, and we're very grateful for the support and advice to ensure this evening is run with integrity and maybe a bit of fun. We'd like to extend our thank you to the mayor's office, including our borough clerk, for helping us to secure this central location today. No small feat, given the flooding that this room experienced just a few months ago. And we hope that we all here maintain decorum, integrity, and kindness in this event. Please remember, we are simply neighbors, helping neighbors who in just two days, we're gonna be barely trick-or-treating knocking at each other's doors. So now on process and what to expect. This is a moderated Q&amp;A with questions researched and submitted in advance. There will be an opportunity at the end to personally meet Mr. Bradler and Mr. Hollers and ask them any individual questions that you may have. We sent guidelines printed here today to each candidate in advance, but we did not send them the questions in advance. We picked a name out of a bag to determine who will speak first, and with that, we will start with introductions. Mr. Hollers, introduce yourself to your neighbors today and explain why you are running for school board. And in this two-minute opening statement, please include a bit of who you are, why you're running for school board, and what your related qualifications are. You have two minutes.
Thank you, Maria and Rebecca, for organizing this. Thank you for P R K G T V for televising this. And thank you, everybody, for coming. Neighbors, nice to meet you. I appreciate your time coming and spending with us. David Shelton-Hollers Jr. is my legal name. I go by Shelton-Hollers, even unless you're really mad at me. I moved to Park Ridge three years ago for the schools. I have three children in the schools. I've got two in the middle school and one in Westridge. And that's basically where I moved here. So what was the... It was just introduction for me.
And related qualifications for this?
Thank you. So I've spent over 20 years in professional development, which is adult learning. So very similar. Children learn in the same way that adults do. So I spent that professionally. I've been working at Arena. I've also been on another Board of Directors that is volunteer, election-based. I got re-elected, so I ran for two years there. So my qualifications in the board and experience professionally, I think, set me up well for the BOE. And I originally moved here from Austin, Texas, grew up in the public school systems there, and I've seen school systems in Austin, New York City, and now Park Ridge. And love our schools. And that's me. Nice to meet you all.
Thank you, Mr. Bradler. Same question.
Okay, just forgive me. I'm suffering from a cold, sore throat. I'll do my best. Thank God for this. Anyway, Maria, Rebecca, thanks for having us. Parker's TV, everybody here, somebody's seen before, whether it be at Westridge two years ago or at Wordy. I'm David Bradler. David is my legal name. Again, if I hear David, I'm in trouble. I have three kids. One graduated two years ago, one in high school, one in middle school. I've been here better than part of 18 years. I've coached three sports for my girls, and I've been on the board for the last six years. And now he asks why I'm doing this again. And I have so much free time. Now, it's just too important not to, you know? I heard a quote from him once, "If you have the ability, you then have the responsibility." I've been teaching for 22 years. I have two masters in education. And being on the board three years as board president, I feel I've learned so much more than I ever thought I'd known from how to run a school, a school district. And again, I just think it's so important to have individuals and people in town who really have a desire to assume a certain responsibility.
Thank you. So what do you see are the top three needs facing our Park Ridge School District?
Top three needs. First and foremost is to attract and retain good teachers. I see firsthand how we lose teachers, or I work, I work in Lebanon especially, even if we're rich. Nowadays, if you are high math level, science, chem, physics, it's a bidding war. We lost teachers who often get 19 or 20 on their salary guide. We pay pretty well, but other districts can pay more. We don't want to lose those teachers. It ruins the fundamentals of our school system. And another issue, of course, is this, I guess you'd call it apartment complex that's moving in, Sony property. And it's been going on for a while. My first year as president, it's a housing and development committee. And I think we met once because we're waiting and waiting and waiting for this to happen. We sit on demographic studies and see where we stand. And they haven't, I think, put a shovel on the ground yet for the Park Ridge side, but it's coming. And we are preparing for the onset of this. I do worry about that in the future and how it will affect our district and our responsibility for the state going forward.
We reached out one minute.
All right, nice. Fast. Say, can you start again?
All right, so top three needs, right, for the school district? So to echo David's first statement, or Dave's first statement, sorry. I think we need to be competitive as far as teachers and staff go with underlying or outlying districts, right? We need the teachers to come here and not go across the borders of New York or any other towns. I think we need to be physically responsible, so focusing on what the students and the schools need and the teachers need to be able to teach in a safe and comfortable environment and to learn in a safe and comfortable environment. And my third reason is that I think that the needs for supervisors and other administrators are coming up, and they're going to need to be changed in the next few years. And that's a big leadership need that's gonna come around for our town. So we need to focus on getting qualified people that bring value to our town and again, being physically responsible about that.
Thank you. Mr. Hollers, we'll stay with you on this follow-up question. Please pick one of those issues that you addressed, and please share with our audience today what would be your plan for addressing that one issue.
I think leaning on my experience in being in professional development for so long and in leadership roles, I think that the most important one that's upcoming is the supervisors and administrative staff that we need to look at. So very experienced in interviewing people, finding out what their particular skills are, and making sure that those skills are the right fit for the position. So not looking for the best person or the person that's the right price, but looking for the person that's the most valuable for that position in that specific scenario. So for our town, for our specific needs, you know, focusing on things like, do they know how to deal with small-town rather than large-town issue? So yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Same question. Please pick one of those issues and share your plan for addressing.
Okay, I'll go with to attract and retain teachers. And there's a revolution going on in our system in New Jersey. And I've heard reports that we're the number-one state in the country for schools. But with that, we must attract the best teachers. But there's also a caveat there. We don't want to disservice those who've been loyal to the district. And it's a term called longevity that teachers get after 10 years, 15, 20, 25 years, depending on what. I like to reward teachers with longevity for being loyal for us. Sometimes when you hire someone in step 20, it kind of destroys the morale of someone who's been here for 20 years and Nikki Glass. So we want to track, retain teachers, build up support on those teacher staff, and really show them that they're worth the community. I always hear, even during COVID, it's a problem. We love the teachers. We love what they do. And that's all I ever heard. So we want to keep them. And we just want a broader horizon to attract those teachers.
Thank you. This question is for both of you. Related to your platform, the Pasgak Press reports that you are focused on transparency and educational excellence. Starting with transparency, please expand with one way you will increase transparency between the public and the board.
Okay, and this is something we did great strides in the past. When I first started, there was, I think, a lack of, or limited. And since then, the superintendent has newsletters that goes out once a month. Our principals in the high school also learn our parents. In the past, it was just Westridge, Eastbrook, and by volleyball. It's a middle school and a high school. And coffee with the superintendent. I like to offer a little more than that. When people come to a meeting, a board meeting, I want them to feel welcome there and that they can talk to us, they can ask questions. Decide back and forth, but I often will stay afterwards and talk to whoever's there. You know, I'll stay on topic if I can. And but just to know that even if I see you at Wegmans, or Lidl, or anywhere else, feel free to ask me a question. I do represent you. I know I'm providing a service behind the board. By the way, it is volunteer, but I take it seriously. So I think if you're more open in that respect, it goes a long way.
Thank you. So Mr. Hollers, now on educational excellence. Can you please expand with how you define this?
Personally, I think educational excellence for me, like the sort of capstone in an educational term, is our students being able to continue out of our schools into what they want to do. So the particular college they want to go to, if they want to go to college, the particular trade school they want to go to, if they want to go to trade school. If they want to just start a trade and move on to that, then I want them to be able to go on and do that. I want them to have a holistic experience in our high school so that when they graduate, they can go on and live the life they want to and do whatever they want to do for a living in that way. So that's kind of educational excellence to me. There's obviously a lot that goes into that, but I probably don't have the more than 60 seconds to explain that here.
A minute, 20.
A minute? No, sorry, 20 extra seconds. I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now we're gonna move to a section on our, on the school budget and taxes. So this is, I think, an issue that is discussed at length in our community across the state, across the country. And so I'm going to read a larger question first, but keep in mind, this is in the context of the budget and taxes. Can you explain where the money to fund our schools comes from? There are seemingly a variety of opinions among Park Ridge voters related to the fact that our school budget comprises about 2/3 of the taxes we pay. Some seem displeased with this, or at least concerned that the budget will continue to go up and impact taxes negatively. How will you make sure to place a strong focus on fiscal responsibility while protecting the quality of education our students receive and the caliber of teachers we are able to employ? And a follow-up question to that, how does this relate to keeping home values high?
I know. Yeah. Okay, it comes from taxpayers and state agents. And every year, the state dictates how much money we get or don't get. And then we quickly have to create a budget that matches that. I would say 2/3, yeah, that's accurate. And about 70% of our budget is salary benefits that is maintained by our negotiations, collective bargaining that we have to withstand by. A public employee cannot make less than the previous year. Thus, our budget is between special ed, out-of-place tuition, electives, programs, sports. I would say that the best way to maintain our property values is not to cut our programs. You cut your programs, you cut your teachers, you're cutting the way, the reason why people come to Park Ridge in the first place. The rate of number 10 in the Bergen publication, number 10 in the county of Park Ridge is for a reason. People want to come here. They come here to the schools, and our property values will rise. As we've seen, anyone who's ever seen the recent Zillow reports of your own house. And I want to maintain that excellence. It's hard. It's 2% cap every year the state mandates, 2%. And that itself is a struggle. I don't want to cut programs. I don't want to cut special ed. I don't want to cut anything. The state mandates these things. The BOE mandates the bare minimum. If we fail to maintain that, we lose our CUSAC rating. Again, schools go down, values go down.
I'm answering both questions.
Well, to state the obvious, just like Dave did, property taxes are the main source of funding for the schools. State funding is also part of that, although not as much. I think I looked it up. The state gave us a little over a million this year, and property taxes are the majority of that. But to echo his statement, there's a direct correlation between property values and how good the schools are. So people want to move here. They're willing to pay more for the schools. You know, it keeps people in school. There's less kids throwing rocks through your windows because your schools are good and it keeps them, keeps them there. Sorry, that's just an opinion. But I think the way to focus on how we protect fiscal responsibility in the schools is by making sure that we're focusing on needs that people have, both the students and teachers. Again, to be myself, to be comfortable and have a safe, safe learning and teaching environment. So not necessarily spending on frivolous things, but focusing on the things that we need, that we need and not what we want. And I think the biggest need is probably talent. Our teachers are extremely important. The people doing the teaching are extremely important. Facilities are somewhat important as well. Athletics, arts, programs, things like that are important as well. But again, need-based and not sort of frivolously going out and spending things not that our district ever has or would.
Thank you. Related, and you touched upon this a bit in your responses, but can you please clarify for our audience and residents tuning in, what authority does the Board of Ed have as a body or do Board of Ed members have over cutting or increasing local taxes?
So I looked this up. I talked to a lawyer about it. A board trustee does not have direct authority to cut taxes. So if anyone has put that slogan on their, on their voting card, then it is misleading and slightly suspect. So that's it. You just can't. I don't know the inner workings as well as Dave does. I know that we have responsibilities to pay teachers and to contribute certain things. But there is a particular board member who's new, and this is what compelled me to get on the board, who started disproving or declining the consent agenda. He's done that five times. The consent agenda is how the business school, the school's business gets done. If you don't approve that, you're not paying teachers. You're not funding programs. You're not doing the things that need to be done. He went after special education. He went after field trips. He goes after field trips. So it's, you know, this, this made me feel like I needed to be on the Board of Ed. So I think if you can hear any emotion in my voice, that's why, because I have children in schools. And I don't think people should be taken away from this.
Again, the school board has a budget. We hand the budget off to the town, and they levy taxes. They collect taxes. And I'll reiterate then, when we go through our program, believe we try. We can share services. We can increase state services with Pasgak Valley for busing, transportation, et cetera. But we start going through, what programs can we cut to lower our budget? Should we cut out middle school sports? That wouldn't go over too well. I was a middle school coach for 20 years. Should we cut out programs, clubs? Should we not build up our infrastructure? Before COVID, we fixed our entire HVAC system. Today, it would have cost double because of inflation. This 2% cap that Governor Christie created years ago doesn't even match up with inflation. And we were struggling just to maintain. And even a couple of years there, we were about just below the cap. And to maintain our excellence, and I give credit to our business administrator, Bob Wright, who knows the business after 22 years, and he feels comfortable going forward.
Thank you. So for our, so a lot of what you've mentioned is our programs that are, of course, relevant and impactful for students in the Park Ridge School District. For our listeners and viewers here today who do not have children in Park Ridge Public Schools but are voters, can you explain why it's important to vote for candidates running for the Board of Ed and why it's important to fund our public schools? You have one minute each.
Okay. As you can see here, there's two responsible adults, children in the district, obviously embedded, invested. I would say people who are retired would want to see their property values go up the moment your schools go down, I mentioned before. And CUSAC is a measuring tool for the state. When they come forward and they see they're lacking in so many things because we save a little bit of money in our budget, you, again, you will see your property value go down. It's striking. And I'm not gonna mention the towns in Bergen County, I don't know what you mean. But there are other towns in Bergen County that don't have a high rating. And those values of houses are one-third ours. And I guess the old saying goes, you get what you pay for. We have quality schools for a reason. We're a K-12 district. People really like that small-town feel. And I think we should go, moving forward, maintain that.
I think Dave summed it up nicely, so I'm just gonna share a personal story. I've got a very good friend. He's been my friend for about 20 years. We knew each other in the city, and he moved to Park Ridge. He doesn't have children. And he gets asked all the time, why would you move here for the super-high property taxes if you don't have children in the schools, right? I have three kids. It makes sense for me to send my kids to these schools. And his point was that Park Ridge is a great town, and he knows that it's actually his quote, it's gonna keep kids from throwing rocks through his windows if the schools are good. So he's happy to pay those property taxes, and he's got quite high property taxes. And that's, that's basically what keeps the town great and your property values high.
Thank you. So this is a little related to the needs or issues that you've already raised. But in the context of our budget, as a Board of Ed member, what will be your budget priorities when it comes to spending district funds? And more specifically, how will you prioritize spending in a way that may require advocating for increased funding? You have two minutes.
The, so I'm gonna answer this in a much less professional way than Dave will because I haven't been on the Board of Ed yet, and he's got a lot more experience than I do. I would focus, for budget, budget priorities, I would focus on what are the, what are the needs of the students and the teachers? What do our facilities look like? Does everyone have classrooms that aren't falling down around their heads? Do we have enough classrooms to fit everybody? How's our student-to-teacher ratio? Things that made us want to move here and put our kids in these schools. So, you know, Dave said there's gonna be an influx of students coming in. So we've got, we've got to figure out how we're gonna deal with that in a fiscally responsible way. We don't need to build them mansions with elevators, but we do need to give them classrooms that they can, they can sit in, that teachers can comfortably teach them in, that they can get to on time from their regular classrooms. So prioritizing the things as they come up and as they're needed and not wanted is gonna be my key focus. And then accounting for increases, right? Accounting for increases is, again, just focusing back on those things that we really need to improve and finding the best suppliers or contractors or people that can do it that will be valuable for us. So being careful to not be too cheap, right? You don't have to do it twice, but making sure that the job is done well.
And before we turn to Mr. Bradler, quick follow-up question. Funding, as we've mentioned, often comes with trade-offs. Are there any areas of the budget you would consider proposing to cut in order to either reduce expenses or fund a higher priority need?
I'll admit, I haven't gone through the budget in a significant amount of detail yet. But if you'll have me on your report, I promise that I will pay attention to it and be better able to answer that question in January.
Okay, if I understood correctly, you said prioritize spending?
Yes.
Okay, so the way we do things is this committee setup. So it's a structure, Building Grounds Committee has a request, what needs to be done. A few years back, it was tennis courts. It could be locker rooms. And then it goes to the Finance Committee. Can we afford this? If not, it's gone. You know, we're very strict in that. I mean, everyone's very, very conservative on that board. We do not want to waste your money. If it's education, it goes to the Education Committee. New laptops, what's it gonna cost? Are we gonna lease them or are we gonna buy them? And those are ways we try to spend money, I'm sorry, save money rather than spend money. I also would mention that going forward, and I mentioned the Sony property, if we expand our district, our buildings, we don't have that in cap reserve. By the way, which is another way just to, to save your money. We take the money that we make from taxpayers, we put it in capital reserve for a rainy day. And that's where we don't have to have a bond or referendum. But down the road, we're gonna need a referendum. I would think, just personally, if we need to expand our school system, our locker rooms were built with the roof intact, so we could build above it if needed one day. We could build four to five classrooms. We were thinking ahead in that respect.
Same follow-up question. Are there any areas of the budget you would consider proposing to cut in order to either reduce expenses or fund a higher priority need?
It's really difficult for that. We don't have a crystal ball to know what's gonna happen to the building grounds. We don't know if there'll be asbestos removal, if we're gonna have, need renovations for bathrooms of our HVAC system will roll apart in Eastbrook or Westridge. It's kind of hard there. I don't want to take education. I think in some respects, we save a little bit of money if the kids aren't using textbooks. They're just sitting there. Let's go digital. You know, let's, our kids, side note, they have lockers they don't use. And why is that? These backpacks they carry around that are so heavy, and they don't wear jackets. It's been, it's just been a pet peeve of mine for so long. So if you don't need these textbooks, why are you buying them? They're so expensive. You know, the other laptops for a reason, very good laptops. They're not Chromebooks. These are MacBooks, you know? And they're not cheap. But I think it's so important because to have one, let's utilize that a little more.
Thank you. So each school's PTO fundraises and funds tens of thousands of dollars for each respective school. What is your stance on guidelines or how do you think about what should be privately funded by parents and the PTO versus what should be publicly funded through taxes for each of our public schools in town? You have two minutes.
Good question. Heard this last night. We have two sides of town, Eastbrook, Westridge, and they both raise money for different items they need. And any, any smart administrator will never get involved in that unless they have to. Now, I will say this, though. When I get the list of things that we need to buy for our kids, I'm not going to Staples and spending like $1,000, it seems like. I wonder why, are we not providing more? I also wonder about boosters. And there's many things that I want to touch in this next term is to see, we are paying a lot in property taxes, and can we better spend this money? Do we need to have all these supplies in a school year? And how can we evaluate that? In accordance with the PTO, I'd like to streamline that as well. And we are also gonna tackle extras in the coming next term and how to deviate that a little better and streamline that. But that's ways we could definitely find some kind of convergence upon Eastbrook, I'm sorry, Eastbrook and Westridge.
I'm gonna echo Dave's statement and just gonna say that if we don't need to get involved telling the PTO what to do, then we won't get involved telling that PTO what to do. I think they probably have pretty, pretty smart people. I know that, I know that the PTO has pretty smart people, and they have guidelines that they can set for themselves. they can set for themselves, they can form their own committees, they can, they can ask parents to vote on what they want to spend on. But I don't think we necessarily need to create policies telling them how to, how to do their, their fundraising. I think they can get that directly from the parents' involvement. And I would, I would encourage all the parents to get more involved in their, their PTOs.
I would like to have that question clarified in terms of, are there guidelines that you have in terms of what you think should solidly stay within PTO fundraising hands versus where the board should be spending money from tax dollars?
So again, I'm new at this, and I do, I'm learning a lot, if you'll have me learn a lot on the, the board. But in terms of what the PTO does, from what I understand, it's mostly the events, like graduations, Halloween parties, field trips, things, things of that nature. So I would, sorry, repeat the question.
Guidelines on what should be privately funded by parents through the PTO versus publicly funded through, through taxes, under recognizing that we don't want to create an infrastructure where now the board is, is, has oversight over PTOs. That's not the intent of the question. It's more around any sort of mechanism or guideline in place.
I mean, again, not knowing how, how things exactly work now, I would think that the, the parents in the PTO would want to be involved in extracurricular activities that are outside of arts, outside of athletics, and outside of school. So things like Halloween parties and graduation parties, things like that would be organized fully by the PTO and not interfered with by the BOE. With parent approval, of course.
Any questions? Okay. A few ideas here. I'm a little concerned sometimes when the Board of Ed will pay for something that is on a wish list, because we have taxpayers in this town that do not need to fund everything. They fund the fundamentals, I mean, for our schools. And so what I'd like to do, this has become an issue, I think it's time, if re-elected, I'd like to start an ad hoc committee, not a standard committee, but an ad hoc committee as a liaison between both PTOs. Come in there with open mind, and how can we better, I guess, get along, understand the strengths from the Board of Ed, what we can do, and understand the impact from taxpayers. The more that we fund the Board of Ed, it's more we're taxing our residents. And at the same time, I know the PTO does collect money, you have fundraisers all over. My wife was a part of PTO for 15 years, and I'm well aware of the dedication of that association.
Thank you. Mr. Bradler will stay with you, as you mentioned, an ad hoc, an ad hoc committee. So this is related to our, the actual various Board of Ed committees. So as a Board of Education member, you will be a part of various committees to make policy and other school community decisions. For the benefit of our audience here, the committees listed on the Park Ridge Board of Ed website are Finance, Buildings and Grounds, Education and Technology, Personnel and Negotiations, Community Relations, Housing and Development, and Policy. Please pick one committee that you are keen to be a part of and explain how you would contribute to this committee.
I guess I've been on every one. By the way, just to say, the ad hoc committee, it's my suggestion, but as one member of the board, I have to get a little consensus. The Education Committee, I just find you go with your strengths. And being an educator for 22 years, and it's, it's easier for me, I guess, the terms I always hear about, you know, the acronyms that just come natural to me, you know, IPs, BIOPors. I just know what to expect from this committee. And I can give a great importance to it. Again, I also have a beat on, at least in middle school, where I teach, on what the kids are looking for and what would be a waste of money and a waste of time. And not just from a teacher's perspective. I taught their parents in my community all the time. I like that. Policy Committee is my other favorite of mine. We went through and got rid of all policies that just don't really exist anymore. And we can really make a difference on this Policy Committee. I mean, a longstanding difference for years to come. I guess there are time.
Can you give us a question?
So as a Board of Education member, you will be a part of various Board of Ed committees to make policy and other school community decisions. For the benefit of our audience here, the committees listed on the Park Ridge Board of Ed website are Finance, Buildings and Grounds, Education and Technology, Personnel and Negotiations, Community Relations, Housing and Development, and Policy. Please pick one committee that you are keen to be a part of and explain how you would contribute to this committee. You have one minute.
I think Personal and Negotiations is naturally where I go, having worked in professional development for so long. For the corporate world, that's Human Resources, Learning and Development, which is all focused on, on personnel. But that's directly related to finance, because finance, personnel is your biggest expense in the school. So I think, sorry to answer your question with two committees, but I think I'd be willing to volunteer for both, and I would focus on both of those, again, getting value. So making sure that we're compensating our talent the best that we can in the competitive ways that they're staying in Park Ridge, staying with our schools and teaching our, our kids the best they can without overspending on, on things that we don't need.
Thank you. We understand there may be differences of opinion among the board members, among committee members. We, we saw this play out last night at the Board of Ed meeting. Can you please explain how you will work with others on the board in order to drive results and get things done together?
I've been working with people for a very long time in the, in the corporate world, and things can get a little hectic, as I'm sure a lot of you have experienced. I think that listening to everybody's point of view and listening to understand that point of view and making sure that you're really internalizing it and figuring out where they're coming from and putting yourself in their shoes is a way to overcome a difference of opinion, because you can meet in the middle, right? You can have your opinion, they can have their opinion, and you can find a common ground. Most people are willing to, to move toward that. So yeah, that's, it's a, it's a negotiation to meet in the middle most of the time.
Same question.
Yes, last night, many nights over my years, there's been times where we disagree. We talk in common voice. We appreciate and honor each other's point of view, and we're sincere, and you can't beat it. And so when you explain yourself in a mature, responsible manner, in most cases, almost every time is received. And we vote. We vote to the time we disagree, and we respect each other afterwards. Even the most heated debates, because in the exact session or anywhere else, there is a professionalism that ensues afterwards, and that must be maintained going forward, no matter who's on the board.
Thank you. So now the next set of questions are, are around our students and the curriculum. How would you propose addressing the different needs of all students? So for example, special education, students who show high potential, those of different ethnicities, different college and career goals.
Okay, well, diversity is, should be a strong point in our school system. I recognize it all of our needs and abilities. And I find the best way, at least for special ed, is inclusive classrooms. I've worked with collaborative classes for years, and it's treating each individual in their own unique way. And understanding that people learn at different, different paces, different, different speeds of learning. And I've learned through the years, I've had students who struggled like in eighth grade, and I see them years later and just graduated from West Point, you know? Because they found the right mechanism in, you know, middle school and high school to, the teachers to adapt their style to that. It's individual needs. It's not easy as a teacher educator to do that, but they're trained. We go to workshops, PD, we know how to handle these situations. Was there a question?
Just addressing the different needs of all students and the, the diversity that we have.
And not needs to advance placement?
Yeah, so students who show high potential, different ethnicities, different college and career goals, we're defining this in a very broad way.
Okay. To expand our role in that respect, to recognize these kids' talents, especially those who are advanced. Now, we do offer quite a few AP classes, as much as we can in a small town like ours. And to recognize that, those assets that they have, and to have the right teachers available.
I think I've got it.
Okay.
So I think, I think like Dave said, everyone learns differently, and I've seen in professional development that we're finding new ways that people learn, and educators are constantly being trained on these, these differences that people have as well. So I think that you've got a spectrum of learning amongst each individual, and you've got to focus on that and find out what they need. And you've got to challenge the ones who aren't being challenged to keep them engaged. And you've got to adjust your teaching methodology for those who are maybe struggling. And you've got to give them the appropriate amounts of support, both in and outside of the school. And I think a big key to that is making sure that you're communicating with the parents what the needs of that child are, so that they can help support what's going on in the school at home. The learning that they're doing is not just, not just preparing them for tests, because they're not going to go out into the real world and just take tests for a living, right? They need to be prepared for dealing with the real world. And that's going to be a part of the educational program and adjusting to the needs of the students.
Thank you. Across the state, there has been a heightened focus on STEAM programs. In a town of our size, how would you ensure our students have an opportunity to experience these important educational opportunities, including more extracurriculars in science and the arts? You have one minute.
I think making sure that we've got the right educators in place that are experts in those areas, that know how to best teach those programs, getting people hands-on learning, making it exciting, making it fun. And again, making sure that people are challenged in those areas and making sure that we're educated, that the educators are educated on the latest developments, so that they can apply that and give it to the students. So as these things keep developing, and they go off to college or, or off to a trade, they're already completely aware of, of what the newest and latest is in each one of those programs.
Yes, the challenge with STEAM is our small town size. Of course, we qualify teachers, instructors, and again, find a way once, it's not going to be cheap. I don't want to take away from other clubs. What we've done in the past, we spoke about, is outreach in the hills, valley, other schools. Of course, we should provide the transportation for those programs at after-school or sometimes even PM, after 1:00, 1:30, they go to a club, they go to a class in a different school that has the resources to accommodate us. Now, of course, with the behavior of that. But we are limited, and that's one of the drawbacks of a small town, is that we can't offer everything. And that's where we have to have a broad horizon to outreach to other districts. And we have a nice relationship with hills, with valley, the whole Passaic Valley, seven town, eight town makeup. And we kind of help each other out, Emerson as well, is in the same building as us, K-12. And if we can help each other, the kids benefit in the end.
Thank you. What is your stance on the Board of Ed making decisions about the inclusion or exclusion of books in school libraries? You have one minute.
Okay, so typically, what we say is this, is the Education Committee approves all books. That's, that's where it stops. We rely on professionals to see to this. The Board of Ed does not go through libraries, we don't comb through the books, we trust the professionals to pick the right books, we trust the people working in those centers to have, because we're a 7th, 2nd, 12th, a book for a 12th grader isn't really necessary for a 7th grader. And so if there is a problem with that, we better manage that. We have people make sure that this is not appropriate. But for the most part, the Board of Ed, any committee you run, we create policy, we create plans with the teacher, we implement hiring practices, we run, we rely on day-to-day operations from our administration and down to our teachers. And I have to trust in them.
I'll echo what Dave said and take it a little, a step, a little bit further. So it's been kind of a political flash, flashpoint, I'm sure people have seen it. My whole role is to come in and get politics out of the board. We're, we're tired of having exciting board meetings where there's a bunch of like people yelling and screaming about their, their own personal beliefs and politics. It's divisive and it's not appropriate. We have a state, we have a fantastic state of New Jersey that sets guidelines and policies that we're supposed to follow. And if we don't follow those, then the Attorney General can come and sue us. And then we spend a lot of money defending the town against lawsuits instead of spending that money on our schools and on good teachers. So from my understanding, the libraries have guidelines around what's age-appropriate for whatever age, and if someone tries to check out a book that doesn't match with that age, then the parents are notified, we got a call. And my daughter was, was asking for a book that was above her, her age level, and they let us know that she didn't check it out. So I think that that's the way that we've got to continue.
Thank you. And this next session is, section is around assessment. So there's two questions in this category. How do you define success in our schools? And how do you propose we measure student and school success? If we don't meet those standards of success, how and who do we hold accountable? Now, last night, there was a presentation around our assessment results, and so in acknowledgement that we are above the state average, I'd ask that when you say not meeting standards of success, I'd ask that you look at it within Park Ridge year over year and how we can inch that up rather than relative to the state.
Okay, yeah, the, the numbers that I saw last night in comparison with the state were dramatically higher. So it seems like we're, we're still doing very well on assessments. So meeting that high excellence rating in the area is year over year, something that you can compare it to. From what I understand, from the person who was doing all the data, it's such a small district, it's really hard to tell the massive increases or declines, because it could be one or two students that affect the numbers. I would focus more on, on that, on the particular numbers. In fact, last night, I was very curious, looking at the data, it's mostly percentages that you're seeing, that's, that can be misleading. So I would focus more on who the particular students are, how they're doing, are they improving through the school, what's the grade, grade level, and, and why? You know, which teachers are, are doing really well? And to answer the, the final question, it's the superintendent that's, that's responsible for all of this, and, and I would expect them to be on top of that and paying close attention to how the teachers are doing and making sure that the instruction is going well, so that those assessments can, can increase. And I just want to echo my earlier point that the assessments are a test, a point in time, somebody could have had a bad day. And the ultimate test, I think, is when children are leaving the school or they're moving on to what they, they envision for themselves as a, as a senior in the high school.
Assessments, changed names so often, NDA, SLA, to Park, to Iowa, when I was a kid. Different name, same, same theme. And I remember my own daughter, and she was practicing library somewhere before Park Test, where it was called back then, because she wanted to do well. New junior year in science, I'm not sure how much they really take into that. But my value of assessment is, of course, what we saw last night, is when I talk to graduates, those in college, my daughter's friends, and I ask, how is college? And let me say, it's easier than Park Ridge High School. They're prepared and so well. And that's, and how they do, and I love to hear those great stories of our graduates moving on to successful college careers and careers themselves. To me, it's a testimony of our school system. And if we have a problem with assessments, we have a director curriculum, who is very good, but he's very reachable and approachable. We have to talk with him and see where we can filter down how we can address these standards in assessments.
Thank you. Second question in this category is how do you propose measuring the success of our teachers, and what strategies would you propose implementing to support and retain high-quality teachers in our district? Acknowledging this is an area you mentioned earlier today.
Okay, so every teacher who's non-tenured, the first four years, are required to have three observations by either supervisors, principals. At some point, typically, the superintendent or director of curriculum will make an appearance there for an observation, typically the last year, and make sure we are hiring the right person. Non, yeah, non-tenure teachers are going to be doing two a year. These are great assessments. There's a thing called SGO, Student Growth Objective, which was eradicated this year for tenured teachers, not non-tenured. And teachers would, would pinpoint how they would achieve objectives for their students throughout the year, whether it be math, math charts, whatever. And to retain and attract teachers, it's a theme all night long, is to treat them with respect, reward loyalty, and make sure you have a real budget to hire the best that they're available. The last thing they're doing in the world is, is cut costs, hire chem, AP chem teacher is step one, they're not coming here, okay? They're just not. So, that's it.
I think the, the first in time measure of teachers is, of course, how the students are doing on their AP tests and their assessments. So you can capture that in time. You could also take cultural assessments, which I've seen in the business world, and that is understanding, you know, how supportive is the, the community that they're in? How, how willing are they to go the extra mile to make sure that the students are able to succeed? What feedback are you getting from, from parents and students? You can look at things like hiring and retention rates. Would be a good indication of how the culture is in the school. From what I understand in Park Ridge, teachers want to teach here, and we have really great teachers in Park Ridge, so the idea is to keep that going through assessments and in order to stay competitive. It's, again, looking at retention rates. If people are leaving, then there's a reason why. It's for either they're not happy because of the culture, they're not happy because of the money, or maybe their students aren't doing well. So those are all things that are fixable, and... And focusing on their engagement will combat that. You can also look at competitive districts. What do they pay, and what are they getting, and what are they not? That's what matters when they're leaving.
Thank you. Next question is on our building and grounds. So if you think of the Buildings and Grounds Committee, how will you balance the needs of the three schools concerning building and maintenance? For example, there has been a lot of discussion around town on the length of time and cost of the high school locker room project and upgrades needed to both West Ridge and Eastbrook.
I think that making sure that we're getting competitive rates as far as building goes, assuming that we will in the next five years, right, we're going to have to build more. So as we do that, we've got to look at who's doing the building. Is it competitive? So you can do a request proposal, get several entities to come and tell you what they can build and what their final result will be and make sure that you're getting ready for your money. Is that all of the question? It felt longer.
Balance the needs of the three schools, so.
Yeah, right. My kids go to West Ridge, I'll admit it, but I'm not going to be biased against Eastbrook because they went there. So it's definitely going to come down to the needs, the students, and what you need to build in the population increase. Again, comfort, safety, for both the teachers and the students seem to be paramount. But we don't need to spend a lot of money making sure that everybody has lazy boys in their classroom.
What's the first part of the question, last part, balancing?
How will you balance the needs of the three schools concerning building and maintenance? And then there were examples around the high school locker room project, or spend, length of time and cost of that. There's been discussion around upgrades needed to both West Ridge and Eastbrook.
Okay, so these concerns that we get, typically we get through our Building and Grounds Department. Our supervisors there will say, this needs to be done. And that's why it's so important to not be so concerned about this cap that we have. If we don't build up capital reserve, we can't do these things. And then we have to take out a bond to pay interest. It's costing Tyce more money in the long run by doing it that way. And I feel like the schools are like, so, we can't get this. And it's true. And locker rooms, at first, I, that's gave the locker rooms. I think they were around since FDR's administration. I think they were that old. I'm guessing, but they smell that old. It was an embarrassment, basically, if other teams come in there and see our locker rooms for football, whatever, basketball. And it was due. But there's much more we want to do. Since I got on the board, I wanted to redo the cafeteria. My little, you know, pet peeve. But there's trying issues at West Ridge, Eastbrook. And I know that we have to address that as well. So it's a balancing act amongst all three. There's a wish list, what we want and what we need. And the drop of Board of Ed is to understand the difference.
Thank you. Next category is on mental health. What role do you think school boards have in creating a supportive environment that fosters the mental well-being of students and teachers? So for example, someone showing signs of anxiety, ADHD, or other mental health issues?
One of the reasons why I ran for the board was I felt that Special Education Department needed an overhaul. I can say that now, it's been six years. I also found out early going that I wanted to have more mental health therapists on staff. And I had to fight my way through that, just to get one working at half salary. And now we have over three, sometimes three and a half, depending on the year. And I think it's so important. I think it's misleading to think it's not. I had a discussion with someone back in the day who said, depression? I get depressed when the Yankees lose. And I'm like, that's not what we're talking about, you know? And to not realize the extent of it. And I'm so proud of our relationship with our mental health therapists and professionals to address these. Dr. Yeager is quite defined, I mean, he's been here forever, it seems like. Sorry if he's watching. But he's such a valuable asset to our school system. And what was that?
I think mental health is critical, and especially in the schools. They've probably seen our children more during the day than we are. They've definitely got to focus on how the kids are doing, how they respond to things, and then getting them the help they need if they look like they need that help. It's also our parents to take care of as well. Teachers are the other component of that. They have stressful days in school, right? Nobody can deny that teachers' jobs are stressful. So making sure that they get the mental health they need from our school district as well. And making sure that there's a direct line of communication that anyone can get to. So whether it's a student or a teacher, there's some safe space that they can go and if they need to anonymously ask for help. If they're too nervous or embarrassed to go and do that. Mental health is just as bad as physical health, maybe worse. You break your leg, that hurts, you've got a mental injury. So the same kind of issue, it's just not as apparent on the outside.
Thank you. So that concludes the category question. So we're now at our closing questions. So there are two questions here. What sets you apart from other candidates in terms of the next three years and your plans for the Park Ridge School Board? One minute.
Sorry, which candidates?
Other candidates running for Board of Ed in terms of the next three years and your plans for this Park Ridge School Board?
Well, I don't have nearly as much experience as Dave does. So there's that. And I don't know anything about the other candidate. We haven't seen or heard anything from him. I don't know, yeah, I don't know anything about him. So I don't know how to compare myself to him. But just, I guess, in wrapping up everything that I've said in terms of health and safety of students and teachers and making sure that we've got a safe and comfortable environment to learn and making sure we're fiscally responsible and everything should be the main differences between me and another candidate. Again, not knowing what the other candidate stands for other than the slogan of credit taxes.
Again, what sets me apart, I'm here. And I've gotten to know Sheldon because of this. I hope, no matter what happens, that I've earned your respect and friendship since we first talked at the West Ridge graduation night, Marriott. And we both had the best intentions. Again, you have the ability, you have the responsibility to serve. I believe Jonathan Kennedy once said, someone remind me what he said? Ask not what you do for your country. I'm sorry, ask what you do for yourself. Ask what you do for your country, to teach history. Yes, one. Anyway, I find that you could find the board going in a good direction with this bracket here.
Final question. What is the one thing you want our audience and viewers here to remember about why you are running for school board as we all head to the polls by next Tuesday, November 5?
I want to maintain the excellence of Park Ridge schools. But I'm not naive. I know we do better. We always do better. We maintain that. It takes a strong board, a strong board to actually discuss with the administration, the superintendent, the E A, have the confidence to say, this is what we want. We're not going to retire us, but we're formidable. And we will answer to the people. Transparency, communication, and we'll get the job done.
What is the one thing you want our audience here to remember about why you are running for school board as we all head to the polls by next Tuesday, November 5?
I think the one thing is, I'm a little bit selfish, right? I've got three kids in the schools. I saw the BOE, one of the BOE members going what I consider sideways on us. And I felt compelled to get involved for that reason. I want to see Park Ridge schools continue down the path of excellence. I want to see them progress. And I want to see more and more kids come out of Park Ridge schools, and teachers come out of Park Ridge schools, having had a fantastic experience and setting them up for their futures.
Thank you both for being here today and sharing your perspectives.
Thank you.
In closing, thank you to the candidates, Mr. David Bradler and Mr. David Shelton-Hollis Jr. for taking the time to engage with the public, your neighbors, and sharing your perspectives on why you are running for a seat on the Park Ridge Board of Education and what you hope to achieve if elected. We extend our thank you to everyone who joined us this evening in person and via Park Ridge TV. As a gentle enough partisan reminder, we encourage you to make a plan to vote. Early voting is now open through Sunday, November 3. And our closest in-person polling locations are Tice Senior Center in Woodcliff Lake at Tice's Corner, 411 Chestnut Ridge Road, Riverview Community Center at 628 Riverview Road. Both locations are, early voting hours are Monday through Saturday, 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Sunday, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. In addition, election day is next Tuesday, November 5. And the polling location address can be found by going to the New Jersey Division of Elections website and entering your address. There are three in Park Ridge, on the east side of town, at Eastbrook Elementary in the multipurpose room,[1767.84]